Good afternoon. Good afternoon, everybody. Chairman Benno Schmidt is attending a memorial service for a dear friend, and so he will arrive a little later this afternoon. He asked me to start the meeting, so I'd like to welcome all of you to our Board of Trustees meeting. And before this public meeting is called to order, I would like to announce that we will be going into executive session to discuss some personnel matters, and then we will reconvene. First of all, I'd like to read to you the following notice which has been distributed into the record of this public meeting. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs at which members of the public may speak. In addition, written communications to the Board are distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore will not tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. Now, I would like to just ask everyone to please turn off their cellphones, or put them on vibrate, or any other way that will not disturb us. Cellphones, iPhones, iPods, or whatever, please. Thank you very much. As usual, CUNY TV is making available an important community service by transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees on live cable channel 75. This meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed by going to www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. So, on behalf of the Board and Chancellor Goldstein, I would like to first formally welcome Dr. Alexandra Logue. Where are you? Oh, there. How are you? She is our new interim Executive Vice Chancellor and University Profess, so I'd like to welcome her to this meeting, and we look forward to working with you, Dr. Logue. Also, our warmest congratulations to trustee John Bonici, who has been appointed by the Cardinal as pastor of a church in Chester, New York. Trustee Bonici could therefore not be with us here tonight because he is attending to this transition. He will be officially leaving the Board of Trustees on June 30, 2008. His successor, the Honorable Peter S. Pantaleo, was nominated by Governor David Patterson, and his appointment was approved by the New York State Senate last week. Peter is an attorney and the managing partner of the New York Office of D.L.A. Piper. He is a member of CUNY's Business Leadership Council, working very closely with the Chancellor and CUNY in many beneficial ways. Peter will be formally introduced at the September meeting of the Board of Trustees. At this time, I am very pleased to introduce and move a resolution of appreciation in honor of trustee Bonici. I'll read it. It will say number nine, "Resolution of Appreciation to John S. Bonici. Whereas, the Honorable Father S. Bonici was appointed by Governor George Pataki to the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York in 2002, and whereas, he has been a dedicated trustee and has played an important role in supporting CUNY's renewal, bringing his commitment to quality and accessible public higher education to all of his activities at CUNY. And whereas, he served as a member of the Board of Trustees Standing Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs since 2002, and as his vice chair since 2006, and whereas, he provided valuable contributions to the well-being, safety, and progress of the university's students. And resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to the Honorable John S. Bonici for his exemplary service to the City University of New York, and be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for continued success in all his public and private endeavors." May I have a second to this?
Second.
Any question? Any discussion? May I ask for approval? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? May we congratulate him with an applause which we know he will hear wherever he is? I would like to report that the Board held its Bronx Borough hearing together with the regular public hearing on June 20, 2008 calendar, at the Bronx Overall Economic Development Corporation on Monday. It was June the 16th. I was, Benno Schmidt was at that meeting. He chaired the meeting and the combined hearing, and it was also attended by trustees Ugo Morales, who is here, Robert Ramis, me, Chancellor Goldstein, and members of the Chancellery, and the CUNY presidents who are in the Bronx. So, I would like to just thank all of those who were able to attend and thank them for their service. A summary of the proceedings has been circulated to the trustees and Chancellor's Cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the Secretary. I would also like to thank my fellow trustees for your participation in this year's many, many commencements. Each one is a special celebration of the great achievements of CUNY students and faculty, and I, we, very much appreciate your involvement and support. I would also like to thank and acknowledge the investiger of President Tomas Morales, which took place on May 29 in conjunction with the College of Staten Island commencement ceremony. I officiated during President Morales's investiger, and trustee Kate Pacilli also relayed the Board's greetings. Congratulations to President Tomas Morales. We have a number of other honors that I'd like to mention. There are several honors from our trustees, and I would like to mention that trustee Rita DiMartino served as a panelist to an executive summit session at the recent conference of the American Association of Hispanics in Higher Education, which was held in Miami. The panelists shared their views on the responsibilities and challenges of overseeing institutions of higher education throughout the country. Congratulations, Rita. Also, trustee Kathleen Pacilli was presented with the Randall Award for Community Service by the Snug Harbor Cultural Center at the 25th Anniversary Celebration of the Neptune Ball. That was in Staten Island and Snug Harbor. Additionally, honors go to and congratulations, kudos, to trustee Cara Robles Roman, who received the Latina Excellence in Leadership Award at the 12th Anniversary Gala of 100 Hispanic Women, Inc., at the New York Hilton, in recognition of her numerous accomplishments on behalf of the Hispanic community and dedication to civic duty. Congratulations, Rita. Furthermore, congratulations to trustee Wellington Chin on his first and very successful Chinatown Partnership Gala, at which CUNY was cited for its commitment to Chinatown. Congratulations, Wellington. And, this one is a great pleasure to mention. Congratulations to trustee Ugo Morales on his, this is not a typo, on his 75th birthday celebration and 50th wedding anniversary. Speaking of birthdays, trustee Jeff Weisenfeld, where is Jeff? Is here. On his 50th birthday, congratulations to you, Jeff. You have been born as many years as Ugo has been in his wedding, but that's okay, you will catch up.
Maybe I'm the baby.
That's exactly right. Now, congratulations to all of you. Also, I would like to mention, congratulations again to trustee Manfred Philip, who was recently re-elected to a two-year term as Chair of the Executive Committee of the University Faculty Senate. Manfred, congratulations. Now, I will go into a few reports. I will now call on trustee Bill to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you. The High School of American Studies at Lehman College has received a gold medal in the rankings compiled by U.S. News and World Report, which places it among the top 100 schools in the nation. Congratulations. Kingsborough Community College Associate Professor of English, Hope Parisi, was recently made co-editor of the Journal of Basic Writing, which publishes articles of theory, research, and teaching practices related to basic writing. Articles are referred by members of the editorial board and editors. Congratulations. And finally, several Townsend Harris High School students engaged in physics research at Queens College won awards at the 2008 Intel International Science and Engineering Fair. Two students, working with Professor Vinod Menon, won second place in the overall team category. Another student, doing research with Professor Igor Kuskowski, won third place in the physics category. Congratulations to them all. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much, trustee Bill. Now, I will now call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. Jean-June Park is a fifth-year student who came here four years ago from Seoul, Korea, to study at the School of Architecture, Urban Design, and Landscape Architecture at City College. He was awarded first prize in the 2008 Eleanor Alwic Scholar Grant Program and received a $10,000 stipend. The award is given by the Center for Architecture Scholarship, with additional support from the American Institute of Architects, New York Chapter, and the AIA National. Congratulations, Jean-June. Ten CUNY undergraduates have been awarded 2008 scholarships by the Kaplan Education Foundation via its leadership program. Four are students at LaGuardia Community College, two are students at Borough Manhattan Community College, and one each are from Bronx, Hostos, and Queensborough Community Colleges. And the Associate Degree Program at John J. College of Criminal Justice. Congratulations to each of you. City College School of Education graduate student Cory E. Sullivan received a 2008-2009 Fulbright Scholar Award to teach English in Spain. McCallie Honors College student at Hunter College, Iana Owen, won a Ford Foundation Pre-doctoral Fellowship, and CUNY BA student at Hunter College, Tennessee Jones, won a Jacob Javits Fellowship. Hunter pre-med students May Kang and Samia Mohammed have been awarded Jonas E. Salk Scholarships. 2008 Hunter Graduate College Elizabeth Rodriguez has been selected a New York City Urban Fellow. And Hunter students Nikolai Linyansky, Stella Mai, and Jennifer Milosevic were among 300 students worldwide who were selected to be part of the Global Government Forum at the United Nations. Congratulations to all of you. Baruch College student Carlos Macias, who is the co-editor of the 2008 issue of Baruch's Dollars and Cents publication, has won a New York Financial Writers Association Annual Scholarship. Congratulations. And Queens College incoming doctoral Neuropsychology student Janice Lenzer has been awarded an Epilepsy Foundation Student Fellowship. Congratulations to all of you. Mr. Vice Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much, trustee Pacilli. Great honors indeed. There are a number of other lists of grants and gifts that have been received by the university subsequent to our April 28 meeting. They're available around the table and also in the trustee's calendar book. I'd like to now call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report and give us an update of activities.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me report first that CUNY and the Professional Staff Congress, the union representing our faculty and instructional staff, have reached a tentative settlement on a collective bargaining agreement. Also, that we reached an agreement with DC 37. That pay bill for DC 37 has been passed by both the Assembly and the Senate, and we are about an hour away from getting the pay bill introduced for the Professional Staff Congress as well. I want to thank the Executive Committee of the Board. I had to ask that the Executive Committee come into session twice, one on June 16 and one on June 20. I know that this was a great imposition for all of you, but I appreciate you making time in your calendars to do that. As a result, the Executive Committees were able to represent the full Board in the support of the recommendations that we brought with respect to settlement agreements on these contracts. I do want to mention specifically the very fine work of Vice Chancellor Pamela Silverblatt and Executive Vice Chancellor Alan Dobrin, who, together with staff, worked tirelessly to see that, especially the PSC contract, was done. This was a long negotiation, and I think ultimately was a very good contract for our faculties and others, and want to thank them for the late nights. Thank you for calling me at 3:00 in the morning and 4:00 in the morning on various items, but we got it done, and kudos to the two of you. I also want to acknowledge the very good work of our colleagues in Albany, especially in the Governor's Office, Paul Francis and Dan Shepard, Dan in the Division of the Budget, who took very late night calls from me to make sure that we got this done. Mr. Chairman, we conferred about 35,000 degrees this spring, which is a record of degrees that this university conferred in an academic year, and it's really a reflection of the higher retention rates and certainly higher graduation rates that we are seeing throughout the university. It's a ubiquitous kind of experience across each one of our campuses. For those of you who like to count, and I must admit, I do like to count, in the past 40 years, we have graduated over 1.1 million students with degrees from this university. That's a pretty remarkable statistic, and we're going to keep on going. And this university continues to recruit record numbers of students. For the fall 2008, our data show that admissions are now ahead of last year, which was a record year, by 3.7 percent. And the largest increase this year remains in the group of applicants with over high school averages of 85, representing an increase of about 7 percent. I'm told from UAPC that they've received 3,000 more applicants for the fall 2008, and this is higher than for the entire 2007 admissions cycle. So, this university continues to be viewed as a valued place to study, and it really is a tribute to our faculty, our staff, our presidents, members of the central administration, the Board certainly, in creating a set of attractors that have yielded such extraordinary attention to this university, and I thank all of you for the very hard work that you continue to do. Let me talk briefly about the state budget as we know it today and the city budget, which is still in a dynamic state of completion. For the fall '08, for the fiscal year '08-'09, and you've heard this from Vice Chancellor Ernesto Malave, but it bears repeating, the state adopted budget contained a little under $18 million in reductions to CUNY senior colleges' operating budgets. In addition, the state reduced by about $3.4 million in spending authority in our special revenue accounts, resulting in a total savings target of $21 million for next fiscal year. As I reported to this Board, we developed a financial plan, a savings plan, which was worked very closely with each of our presidents, and at the end of it, we have created a vacancy control program for non-faculty and a direct student services positions and reduced programmatic lump sum allocations to a number of our campuses, and a number of other areas that should not impact deeply. However, we have also requested that we encumber about 1.5 percent of the operating budgets on a going-forward basis, where this budget begins, as you know, on July 1, in anticipation that there will be further changes to the operating budgets. I want to also state publicly that we need to be very focused and attuned to the changing economic climate, not only in this state but in this nation as well. I believe I have reported, certainly to the presidents and my senior administration, that for next year, the governor and his advisors are looking at about a $5.5 billion budget deficit for next year. And numbers of this magnitude are somewhat daunting and challenging for all of us. Projections, of course, are an inexact science at best, and as we go out even further, those projections become even less precise. But the following year, the 2010-2011 year, the projection on deficits climbs to over $7 billion, and if we go out a third year, the deficit looms to about $8.5 billion. Now, I don't mean to say this in any alarmist way, I'm just repeating what some of the economic and econometric models are portraying for the state of New York. Obviously, things can change in a very dramatic way, but so much of these dollars that I've just mentioned are a result from already obligated dollars connected with contracts that have been assigned by the state of New York. So, we're going to have to watch this very, very carefully. A new tuition benefits program has been enacted as a result of the New York State budget for '08-'09 and signed recently by Governor Patterson. Starting this fall, veterans who attend CUNY will pay virtually no tuition, and that is a very, very good thing I would submit for all of our returning veterans. Governor Patterson has also signed a bill into law that eases restrictions to the New York College Choice Tuition Savings Program. This is a program that allows relatives, employers, and others to contribute to state-sponsored college savings accounts, which is something of great interest to all of our students, not only here at CUNY but throughout New York State as well. You have heard me speak on a regular basis about the Commission on Higher Education. You do know that we, as a member of the Commission, we put out an interim report. This interim report was around the beginning of this calendar year. The final report is about to be released. It only differs very slightly from the interim report in that in this particular final report, there is a call for a higher education endowment, which I have talked to you at some length about, and I've talked to you about the structure, as envisaged at the time by the governor and his advisors. This is still very fluid, but it's something that we are going to watch very, very carefully. You've heard me talk about the importance of endowments in higher education, and they will only become more important as time goes by, so we're going to be watching this very, very closely. We are working not only with our trustees, but with others, with the governor and the governor's staff, to not only educate but to really promote the notion of investing in this university. We have talked about reducing the regulatory burden on this university, but we've also talked about the need for sustained and predictable investment in order for this university to meet the very daunting challenges that we have not only here but compared to others in higher education as well. On the city side, negotiations between the mayor and the city council are ongoing. You know that I've reported that in the mayor's executive budget, there was a reduction proposed of slightly over $25 million in operating core needs of the community colleges, and another almost equivalent amount of money, bringing the total to about $50 million, in support for key programs like the balloon and safety net scholarships, the blackmail initiative, and a bunch of other programs as well. We have been working tirelessly, not only with the city council but with the executive branch as well, and we're hoping at the end of this process, after much effort in, not only in communicating very directly with the stakeholders here and the decision-makers, but also through formal testimony through the higher education and finance committees of the city council. We certainly will continue that unrelenting dialogue until we get to the end of the process. I want to compliment Vice Chancellor Iris Weinsholl and President Antonio Perez, along with so many students, faculty, and community leaders who testified this past Friday at the city council on Fetterman Hall, a building that all of you know was irreparably damaged as a result of the attacks at 9/11, and we're hoping at the end of this process that we will be in a position to move that project to the next phase, which would be the deconstruction of that building and start the construction of a new Fetterman Hall that has been designed. This summer, the presidents individually, with myself in particular, will be sitting and going through the performance management process. This is a very arduous process where goals have been established by each campus, along with agreement from the central administration. The metrics have been agreed upon, and my time with the presidents is spent going through the data, drilling down to understand where misses were made and where successes were accomplished, and to use that to better understand exactly where each of our campuses are with respect to various components of the master plan that was established four years ago, and the individual strategic plans that were developed by each of our campuses. Vice Chancellor Gary Moore and the staff of the Office of Student Affairs have been working closely with all of the colleges on relief drugs. working closely with all of the colleges on relief drives relating to natural disasters, and we've had many, not only in this country, but globally as well, earthquakes and hurricanes and other natural disasters that have occurred. So, I just want to thank Gary for the work of mobilizing this and the support of the entire CUNY community in getting this done. Let me conclude, Mr. Chairman, by joining with you and Chairman Schmidt, and congratulating our trustees on their awards and their birthdays, anniversaries, and for